The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Lauer.
Ms. Shanafell.
Here.
Mr. Cozer.
Here.
Mr. Arcuri.
Here.
Dr. Poroska.
Here.
Mr. Steigel.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Front and center.
Mr. Rob.
Here.
All right, seeing no special reports, approval of minutes, Petersland council meeting held on July 22nd.
Settle.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Propose. Seven, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Audience comments limited to five minutes for non-agenda items.
Let's move on.
All right, unfinished business, award contract to perform a library space assessment project.
So two meetings ago, this was on the agenda. At that time, council asked for an opportunity to be able to review the proposals themselves. We provided those at the last meeting to give you that opportunity. You know, we went back and based upon the discussion and looked at the proposals and our recommendations and we stand behind the recommendation of awarding a contract to HBM Architecture for $45,550. Lacy, of course, is here to talk about that. Also here tonight is Mara Kelly, who is the president of the Petersland Ship Library Foundation. And as the report indicates, Library Foundation has offered to cover half of the cost of the project. With that, Lacy, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. So you folks had a lot of questions for me last month, so I just wanted to take a couple of minutes and, you know, expand a little bit on how this recommendation came about and why we feel this project is so important for the library. So this project originally started with the library's strategic plan that council passed in 2022, but even before that strategic plan was developed, we've been thinking a lot about the library building and kind of what needs to be updated moving forward to keep up with the changing and growing library. So there were four objectives in that strategic plan related to the building. So that was taking a look at the archives and local history space, the youth services department, the adult services department, and the maker space. And these four objectives came up after lengthy conversations with staff to identify issues in their departments. So we've already accomplished the maker space move update, whatever you'd like to call it. That was kind of an easy one for us to solve on our own. And so while we can recognize the issues in the remaining three spaces and advise on maybe what we would like to see, we're not able to appropriately identify solutions at this point. So we feel that moving forward with the design firm is the best way to accomplish those strategic plan objectives for kind of some reconfiguration with the library, staying within our existing footprint, reusing a lot of what we have, shelving furniture, things like that, but trying to just make the space a little more efficient. So statewide and nationwide, this is a problem that a lot of libraries are facing. And, you know, within driving distance of us, there's a reason that there's three firms that can financially afford to only do business with libraries right now. It's something that they're seeing a lot because the library buildings that were constructed 20, 30, 40 years ago were just never intended for, you know, the level of service and the types of things that we're providing nowadays. You know, when this building was built in the 90s, we're offering more technology, more programs, we have more staffing, more services than we ever did back in the 90s. And I'll be honest, your residents are still demanding more. We send out surveys multiple times a year, kind of asking what people want to see, and it's always more, 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 more. Their answers always start with more and more programs, more technology, more classes, whatever the case may be. And we kind of feel like, you know, where the library building is at this point, we're not really able to provide that. It's a beautiful space and the township has done a great job at keeping up the maintenance over the years, but it was just never intended to be used in the way it is right now. And I'll be honest, the library, when this building was built, had barely made the switch to even checking out books using computers when this building was built. They were still using the paper cards. And so we've backfilled a lot of technology.
I still have my paper card.
Yeah. I have a card catalog in my house. I bought one on eBay because they're so cool. But yeah, when this building was built, they had just barely made the switch to using computers.
Let me make this a little bit easier. I was probably the one sway vote that said, I'd like to look at the proposals. I did take them home, I did read them. I thought there were a number of excellent proposals. I'm not able to give you a distinguishing opinion relative to the one that you selected versus some of the others, but if your more intense investigation, you know, has concluded what it did, I don't take any exception to it. So I would propose that we award the contract to HBM.
I'll second. Yes, is there a chance that they could go through this study and come out and say the building footprint itself just isn't conducive to?
Uh, that's not really an acceptable answer to me. I-
In fact, the, the, the basis upon which the RP was, was sent out was not, the solution not to be an expansion of the building, but rather the, the use of the, the space as it is right now.
Yeah. And we were very upfront about that in the pre-bid meeting as well.
And everybody understood that, that we interviewed. The one thing that I will say, and you, and I would consider this to be an existing space, although it is outside the building, right now, they, they utilize the space between the edge of the building and East Big Burn Road to do a lot of summer programming. It's kind of jammed in there. I think there's a better way to do that, but again, I don't know what that is. And I do think that's one thing that we do want them to look at. It may be to put a picnic pavilion in at some other location or something like that, but I would consider that to be utilizing existing space as opposed to an addition onto the building.
Yeah, and we were very clear, you know, I think all of the firms that ended up submitting bids were at that pre-bid meeting and took a tour of the library with us, asked a lot of questions, got to see the space, and so they definitely had that understanding of what we were looking for. And we also made it very clear that we wanted to reutilize a lot of our existing shelving and furniture and stuff. To me, this isn't really an interior design project to make it look prettier, just swapping out some spaces for others.
Motion on floor. Second. Motion on second. Any other discussion or questions for Lacy or Mr. Lauer? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Propose?
Nay.
All right, five, two, motion passes, Mr. Lauer. Thank you, Lacy.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, new business, special permit for CFS Bank, hold a car show on September 24th, 2024, from 5 to 7.
Settle.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? Seven, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Peterswood Park, no parking on grass signage, Mr. Lauer?
So throughout Peterswood Park, there are posted no parking on grass signs, and as council is aware, this regulation, when enforced, has not been well received by park users. For the most part, the problem is related to the football season. Every Saturday, there's a multitude of games and participants urged to arrive an hour early. And where there's sufficient parking for two teams and two sets of parents and grandparents, there isn't for four. And as a result, we have parking all over, over the park. In, in prior years, this, when this was enforced, I would get visits from people on Monday morning with their parking ticket in hand. Last year, the police on their own decided not to enforce this, and I was getting calls about how can police officers drive by cars parked under the no parking sign and not issue a ticket? You know, and my point to Dave and to the people who maintain the park and to Chief Culver was, we need to be doing one or the other. If we're gonna, if we're gonna have the signs up, we need to enforce them, or we need to remove the signs and allow people to park on the grass. Dave took this to the parking rec board and they're of the opinion that we should remove the signs.
I have a question for you, Paul, before you begin at the end. Isn't there sufficient parking out there? I mean, all that parking around the bend where the soccer field is, there's not enough parking for those people to park there. They have to park on the grass.
Not if you have four teams, four sets of cheerleaders, and four sets of parents and grandparents. There is not enough parking to handle that. So, you know, my thing has always been, if you could separate the games, you could handle this. But what you can't handle is telling people to arrive an hour early, so people are arriving while there's a game in place. It doesn't seem likely that the Football Association is going to change how, how they schedule. The park department, who, the people who maintain the park are willing to assume whatever needs to be done to repair the grass when people park there.
I think the biggest problem I see is accessibility for emergency vehicles. I think it's tough for an ambulance to get in there, and I, I don't see a fire truck being able to get into-
Well, the one thing that I, I spoke to Dave about this morning is, I would support removing the no parking signs on Meredith Drive and on Bruni Drive. But what I would not support is removing the no parking signs from the grass areas so that people aren't parked, like for instance, in this picture, people aren't parked to the left here and doing exactly what you're concerned about, potentially creating a situation where you can't get emergency vehicles through or, or damaging the turf in those areas, so.
I don't care what we do, I'm not voting in favor of that. So whatever you guys want to do, I'm a-
May I? In favor of what, removing the signs?
Yeah, I'm, I think we should enforce that parking. That's too bad.
Well, yeah, I mean, the football has options too.
So they're gonna get hit or something. You watch.
So just like, you know, when soccer has its, when soccer has its large tournament, we have golf carts that can shuttle people from further away, so they could have people parked down below and have a shuttle that runs, you know, parents and grandparents up and down. So there are options other than just us removing the signs and, you know, there's lots of concerns for that.
Except for that doesn't make, you can offer those options, but not everyone's gonna follow them.
Unless they get ticketed.
Yeah, but the problem-
No, you didn't care.
One, one other concern is, we do have soccer going on at the same time as football. So that parking on Bruni Drive is taken up by soccer. So that limits a lot of parking for football. The areas on the left-hand side of Meredith Drive, the islands, we're gonna rope those off so that line of sight, when people are pulling in and out, those areas won't be able to be parked in so that people can see coming in and out. We don't want them parking along the road. We're along, near the football field, we're gonna, we're gonna rope that area off too so that we don't have kids cutting between cars across the road into traffic. We're gonna block some of that area off. So it'll be down further and not further from the football field that they'll be able to do this.
Mr. Brooks, how many times a year would you say you guys have to go out there and patch grass that people rip up?
Since I've been here, we haven't patched any grass from, it's established ground. If we get a big, heavy downpour-
A rainy day, right.
I can, I can see that happening. But at that point, if we have that much rain, football makes the decision to work with Brian Guyer to move to the high school and plant the turf. They've done that in playoffs last year.
But if you look at that picture, what you will see is the area underneath those parking sides don't have grass on them. The reason they don't have grass on them is people park there. See, I-
Sorry, one of the, no, because mine doesn't really regard, go ahead.
No, no, you go ahead.
Okay, so one thing that I was thinking, down by the baseball fields, in that one parking lot, so it would be PW2, like that where the far part of the parking lot, we dump all that dirt back there, which takes up a whole bunch of spots. And during the really busy times, whenever there's games on both sides, you can't park in a bunch of spots because of that. I mean, it would hurt if we moved that back.
Right, correct. We can move that.
That was just one little thing I noticed.
With that project going on too, we won't have that infield mix being put there. But that lower parking lot this fall is gonna be taken up with construction of the, of the two fields. So that's gonna limit even more parking, blacktop parking in the park.
What about the field, I mean, it used to be like grasshopper soccer, then it was a dog park. Could we open that temporarily on Saturdays?
It's, it's still being scheduled by the Soccer Association.
Back to soccer, Paul.
Yeah, they use it.
They're still using that on Saturdays?
They do this fall, yeah. Yeah.
Is there any other area?
I thought of every-
Where you could have like designated grass parking? So that way people weren't just willy-nilly going in and parking wherever they want. Like, I know you're saying to rope those off, but if we had, okay, like on Saturdays, here's our designated grass parking area.
It doesn't exist in the park anymore because to the extent that there were areas, we've now paved them. So one of the things that Dave has done since he's been here, you no longer have events scheduled at the, the picnic facility that sits down below the football field. So those spaces are all available. We created another lot at the top of the hill and those spaces are all available. But again, it's, it's just, you're talking about so many people.
Could you ask some, like a volunteer or a couple volunteers from the youth sports to have people out there kind of directing?
I'll, I'll work with the Football Association and Soccer with Jim Lloyd to, to see if they can have some people help direct some of that during, during their busy times.
Because then they can maybe take some ownership in here, everybody complaining to them.
Correct.
Then might have some buy-in.
I think football will be willing to work with us on that if we're able to do this.
See, but the issue becomes, if we don't take the signs down, we have to enforce- That's what I believe you need to do. And, and the fines, what, $50? $50. Right.
But you can keep on getting one technically.
Yes.
Right? I mean, not that they would do that.
What about the outfield right across? They give the football field that pavilion park four, and then there's that small baseball field.
Small baseball field, that area.
You could create an access onto that. That's not being used.
Yeah, but see, I, I think that's really dangerous in the fall when the weather's not, not conducive to that kind of-
There's also, that's an area where the teams are warming up. There's a warm-up area for the teams before they come up to the field. So they get there about an hour before to stretch, they have weigh-ins, they go through all their, their plays and prepare for the game. So they're getting there early. That's a practice area in the far end of the football field. The other end is another area that they, they utilize.
And they, they can't plan when a, a game goes into overtime or gets a lot of calls and runs late and-
It's slower, yes. Right, so what I heard was proposal to remove all signs, but then I heard you say not to remove them.
Oh, no, no. All I'm saying is, from my position, we need to be consistent. We either need to leave the signs up and we should enforce them, or we need to remove the signs. It's one or the other. You can't have the signs up and have people park under them. I think that sends the wrong message. Well, then the other issue then is you're gonna have a policeman there writing tickets when they could be out doing something more important than that.
Correct. The no parking signs on the right-hand side, I'm, I see us leaving those because there's no signs that say that you'll be fined if you park here, but we do need to-
No, there are, Dave, that's an old picture.
Okay, well, we need to, we need to make sure that that roadway is opened up, that we can get EMS in there or fire in there if there's, if there's a situation, so.
Well, if that's the case, you can't let anybody park there, right?
Right. So down below, near, near baseball and that open area where there's some grass, we can, I, I feel that we can park down there.
You don't, so you don't, not to interrupt you, Mr. Brooks, so you don't want to remove them from the entirety of Meredith, then?
Not the entirety. The signs that say you'll be fined, we, we need to be, you know, smart about this and, and what's happening is we have people coming into our, our park to have a good time, enjoy their grandchildren or children play, and they leave with a $50 ticket. It just makes a bad experience, especially from teams from out of the area, so.
But did you say that the Parks and Rec Board wants to take them all down?
Yes.
Yes. I think we should let Mr. Brooks go back and take a look and come back to us and say with like a plan as to which ones he wants to take down.
I agree with that.
So I'll make a motion and we table this.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? Seven, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Next item, Dave and Mr. Lauer, thank you both for looking into it. Authorization solicitation of bids under the CoStar's Cooperation Purchase Program of a fire truck.
So on the township tour, one of the things we did, Lacy, is Chief McLaughlin, we stopped at the Fire Station 1 and Chief McLaughlin had arranged to bring all the vehicles there. One of the things that, that was pointed out is that you have a, a vehicle that is, that is right now 14 years old, and the other side of that is it takes about three, 31 months to obtain a vehicle to replace it, which would mean that vehicle would be 17 years old. And all we're asking for tonight is an authorization to go out and solicit proposals. Our intention would be to do this under the CoStars program. That's how we did the last one, and it quite frankly worked better than sealed bids. There are at least six manufacturers we've identified who can, who can quote under the CoStars contract. And while this isn't in the budget this year, it, it probably would need to show up in the budget for, for three years from now, so. So all we're doing tonight is authorizing you to go out and solicit bids, right? Right. All right, I'll make a motion to authorize the manager to see competitive bids for fire truck under the CoStars Cooperative Purchasing Program.
Second.
Motion on second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? Seven, nothing, Mr. Lauer.
Noticing, noticing that the library just got a new truck. You're aware of what it costs, correct? Because it's pretty much in line with what this pumper is.
Yes, and what St. Clair just paid for theirs.
Well, we talked about that at our-
Cecil Township just signed a contract for. The fire apparatus market has changed dramatically in the last two years.
It's gonna be almost double what it was.
We're, we're trying to stay ahead of it significantly. Other municipalities' fire departments are ordering trucks more in advance. Now, what the proposal process will actually let us do as well as what we've done before on the last couple, couple pumpers we purchased and get the best proposal. It may be something that's already in production that we can modify slightly to get a better price. The ultimate goal is to get a pumper at the best possible price we can.
But I, I'm certain our residents have no concept of what the cost of these vehicles are.
It's, the graphic that Mr. Lauer showed, the price of the latter truck when we bought it in 2018 is about what the price of a pumper is now. It's dramatically changed.
So, I mean, what's, what is it, what do you think it's gonna run?
I think what we put in the budget was around $900,000.
It'll be $850 or more.
I think you're looking somewhere around there. Out of retrospect, the pumper that we just took delivery of in 2023, when we signed the contract for it in the first month of '22-
Something seven, something, wasn't it?
Five.
I mean, that's a lot, that's a big increase.
Significantly.
Keep what we have and keep them running.
Cost of materials.
So it was a cute-
I look at the old engine too, the 2000. That ended up pulling the two other fire departments out to a left arm.
Where they reduce in service and they, they put a, a refurb into them, where they spend a couple $10,000 to, tens of thousands of dollars to refurb them and bring their safety standards back up. Because at that point, the cabin chassis is really the big thing, and for the rescue truck, when it needs to go around 2030, one of the options we would look at doing is actually re-chassis-ing that body because it, it doesn't get used as much. We have to look at other options to, to best cost these things. And really what it does at that point, you figure a 20-year-old vehicle doesn't have the safety features that it does today. Airbags, even the placement of seat belts, you know, the old wagon had the old lap belts in it that we just replaced a couple of years ago. So the safety features increased significantly, so without a major refurbishment or like in the rescues case, a, a re-chassis-ing, you basically have a truck that is not within compliance of the-
What's a re-chassis, Ron?
It depends. Right now, North Durban's kind of being the guinea pig for us on this, and they're doing it with their rescue truck as well. And they're around the 550 mark to re-chassis their rescue truck. Their rescue truck, I think it was in 2010.
Is it not bigger than ours?
It's about the same size as our pumper is. Our rescue, oh, correction, it's the same size as our rescue is. We would look to do that with the rescue in 2030.
You said they're doing their rescue right now?
Yes. 28-month process, I think that is as well.
Is there any grant money from the feds or the state?
The competitive grants, short answer, yes, federal, with FEMA grants through AFG, Assistance to Firefighters Grants. The vehicle money, they put into a separate pot, and it's one of the most extremely competitive in addition to the safer grants. It comes out of that same pool of money from the federal government.
But we can still ask for it, right? Absolutely, but Petersland will always be the disadvantage when applying for that because they're gonna take into account the community and the need and then-
Well, whatever happened with the safer grants for the personnel?
We're, we're- Still waiting on that. We've made an application-
Because I thought we were supposed to get those three years ago, is what God told us.
Well, we've made an application this year. It's an annual application, if you-
This is the first one?
No, no, the, this is the second one. Remember, last year it was turned down. We should be getting it in answer late September, October.
Do we know why we were turned down on that?
We didn't get any feedback from the federal government, so we made through the scoring process, and we would do the same if we chose to apply for a grant, which we can always apply for the grants. They're-
I don't think it hurts.
It doesn't. They're really not labor-intensive, you know, it probably takes a total of 20 hours or so to put together. On the AFG grant, the safer one's a lot more encompass, encompassing. But you go through a scoring process where a computer scores all the applications, if you dot the i's across the t's, then you go to peer review. Peer review is fire associates take a look at the grants, they prioritize them, the federal government, they gets those priorities and hands out the money. One of the priorities is financial wellship and how that affects us.
Gary, to answer your question, if, what I would assume happened with the safer grant, and I think they'll make it a challenge this year, that what they did was they made the awards richer, that they're paying 100% of the cost.
Some more to fewer people.
So you attracted a ton more people who applied.
Yeah, before, there used to be a percentage match that the municipality would have to do, and then they went a step further to guarantee. So it was three years, they would provide you with the employees at X percent, 75% and then 25 in the last, and then you had to retain them for two years after that at 100%. Those restrictions have, have left, and now it's opened up, Act 47 communities where the competitiveness is extremely, just across the state of Pennsylvania, very, very, very competitive.
So what you're saying, chief, is we should rejoice when these proposals come back if they're still in the six figures?
Pardon me, Will, because Cecil had two of their proposals come back in the million for, for a simple pumper. But I think what we do is, with getting proposals, is take a look at the auctions that we have. If there are demo options, if there are spec truck options, spec trucks are a good thing. You know, we're not picky about trucks, other municipalities, libraries might, you know, the library, fire department, they, the trucks are part of what they have here, that the trucks don't provide the service, the, the people on the truck provide the service. So we, we tend to get trucks that are work trucks versus parade trucks.
Well, you know, we talked in the past about doing those, what are they called, the mini-pumpers or-
Yeah.
I think, is it Louisville? One of the Kentucky cities, they want the purchasing just those going forward. It seems like that'd be probably half the cost of a bull-size pumper, so that's something we can look into again.
Sure, sure. And, and more so, we've seen the advantage of mini-pumpers within District 2 with a lot of the long driveways that we have. When you have a thousand-foot driveway, that you can't get a large pumper up, and that's why some of our pumpers, the, the ones that we purchased now have been under 30 feet in length, are 96 instead of 100 inches wide. So they're, they're smaller, they're less expensive, and they're better suited to get up longer driveways when we have to get to the top of estate homes.
Is there any other, Paul, is there any other cooperative purchasing program that we participate in or could participate in that would, I mean-
No, actually, this will be, not only CoStars, this will be-
Sourcewell.
Sourcewell as well.
Okay, I thought we had another one, I just wasn't sure.
Sourcewell's the other one, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, could it not have hurt, right?
It doesn't. And when, when we do it this way, we kind of see it as we get the best of both worlds where we're, we're getting numbers from the manufacturers, where we will negotiate features in and out of that truck instead of being stuck with that number and that bid spec sheet and that price going through the entire process, so.
I mean, while we're doing this, should we get a bid for a mini-pumper to look at the advantages, disadvantages of buying the regular pumper versus the mini-pumper and see where we're at?
We can definitely look at options. There are certain things that you're going to lack on the mini pumper, that's stored space for equipment.
Sure, sure, yeah. Without getting into the details right now, but I'm saying, get the estimate.
The short answer is yes, we can get prices on them.
Yeah, we would go back.
Would you get two? Buy two. You could fit all the equipment on two of them.
Sure.
So, I think there's a lot more discussion to be had once we see what the things are.
That's the big thing, is to get the prices back, to see the proposals, to present them to council and see what the consensus is.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
All right. Next item, authorization. Are authorized the appropriate township official to execute subdivision improvement agreement with 339 Just About Land Company LLC related Tuscany II Plan of Lots?
So, as I spoke to council before, we have a request from Benjamin Marcus Holmes to modify the subdivision improvement agreement that was associated with Tuscany II. At the time when the plan was approved and the subdivision agreement was drafted and executed, Benjamin Marcus Holmes had committed to, in essence, leading the, partnering with the township, but leading the work to relocate Sienna Trail. And as that has moved forward, it has turned out to be a much more time-consuming and expensive proposition to do. And the thing that about that is, because although I do believe it to be an onsite improvement, the thing that is notable is that the relocation of that intersection does nothing in terms of the Tuscany II plan itself. It is not a point of entrance and egress to the plan. So, what is proposed and what I'm suggesting to council is that we relieve Benjamin Marcus Holmes of doing that relocation. What they are willing to do is to provide us the land at no cost to the township to be able to facilitate that work at a later date. So, you have this, and then you're going to have, coming back to you, I don't think at next meeting, but probably the meeting after that, they have a small revision to that plan as well that you're going to be seeing.
Well, I could tell you, this proposed agreement has the wrong dates on it. It has Gary as the chairman and then Frank Cozer as the chairman, and they're dated 23. So, that's going to all have to change.
Yeah, we got, these are updated. The ones that we have for signature tonight are updated.
Okay.
All right. I'll make a motion that we approve the proposed revised subdivision improvement agreement with 339 Just About Land Company LLC related to the Tuscany II Plan of Lots and authorize the appropriate township official to execute the agreement.
Second.
Motion of second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed.
I'm going to recuse myself.
Six, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Next item, authorize appropriate township official to execute agreement with Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
So, we're in the final steps of being able to seek bids for Phase 1 of the Aquatic Center, which consists of a splash pad and parking lots and the building to support it. As you recall, the Township has acquired $3.2 million in grant funding to offset the cost. A million of that is in the form of a grant from the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources. And they will be in a position to put together a grant agreement once the bids are open. And if the council's prepared to execute the construction agreement, they, at that time, will provide the agreement for the grant. The other grant, the $2 million grant from the redevelopment assistance capital program, that grant agreement is available to the township now. And what it will do is lock in the $2 million so that it's available. If, in fact, when we open these bids, if we choose not to go ahead with the project, it will have no impact on us. But on the other side, we'll know for sure that that money, if we decide to go ahead with the project, that that money will be available to offset the cost. We intend to send this out to bid very shortly. The bid package is being finalized this week. And so, we would hope by late September or early October to be able to come to council with a recommendation on awarding a contract. So, it's my recommendation that council authorize the appropriate township officials to execute a grant agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
So moved.
Motion of second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Seven, nothing, Mr. Lauer.
Mr. Lauer, before, once you execute these agreements, how long do we have then to spend the money?
We have five years from when this grant was awarded. So, we're still got a couple of years left on this. But the thing to keep in mind, it can only be used on this project.
You know, we've beaten that horse to death, I understand. I just remember honestly how long we spent.
We've got time. We're within the timeframe.
Authorized the appropriate township official to execute an intergovernmental agreement with Commonwealth of Pennsylvania permitting continued participation by Pierce Central Police Department of Pennsylvania State Police Automobile Theft Motor Vehicle Insurance Fraud Task Program.
So, this would be the third year of a program that where we participate with the state police and their...
And we get money, right?
It's cost the township nothing.
It's a salary.
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Seven, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Authorization to sell a 2010 JCP backhoe.
We've acquired the replacement backhoe. It's in service. What we're looking for is authorization to go out and sell the 2010 JCP backhoe. And we're recommending that there be a reserve price of $25,000 on the municipal site.
Is that based on, I mean, I don't know. How does one value a backhoe? It's not a blue book.
I go to the mechanic and ask him what he believes. And what they've done is, on the municipal site, there were a number of backhoes, and they look at those ones compared to what the condition of ours is, and that's how they've come up.
Well, you don't know what it's going to come on. If it could go $10,000 above reserve.
Right.
Not, or could not make reserve.
In which case, we'll have two backhoes, yeah.
I guess it's competitive.
I was just curious.
Yeah. I don't know how you would value it either, but I don't know.
Just like we need a guide. There's all sorts of guides out there.
I'll make a motion that you have authorization to sell the backhoe through municipal bid with a reserve of $25,000.
Second.
Yeah. Motion of second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Seven, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Authorize the appropriate township official to execute agreement with the Washington County Intermediate Unit for the Services of School Resource Officer.
So, as we have spoken before, both Chief Glover and I believe it's in the interest of the township, as well as the Washington County Intermediate Unit to employ the services of a full-time school resource officer at the Intermediate Unit Building in Peters Township. The Intermediate Unit has executed an agreement to provide for this that exactly mirrors that which we have with the Peters Township School District. The one thing I will say is that it's taken us a while to get them to execute that agreement for whatever reason. And as a result of that, I do not think we'll have a school resource officer in there as school begins. We had an officer. We were waiting to issue a offer of employment to, and he's taken a position somewhere else. So, we're back out advertising to fill the position.
Did we fill the supervisor position as well?
Yes. Spencer Scott has been made a sergeant.
And was he an SRO previously?
He was not.
Okay. So, that, it's all, everything, all those positions are filled with the exception of...
Right.
Okay. We just pay a portion of, they pay much, they worry there's no... So, are we going to have to hire another policeman then to fill this role?
You know, my point to Chief Glover is that I do not want to be shorting the staffing we have on patrol to fill a position in the intermediate unit, only to have that position replaced. So, what you're really hiring potentially is somebody who will be on patrol. We also have used that provision we have in the contract to allow us to hire a seasonal officer who would only, who would cost less and would only be assigned as a school resource officer. We've already gotten a number of applicants, former police officers, who are interested in that seasonal position. And if we can fill it that way, that's the way we're going to fill it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Need a motion.
All right. I'll make a motion that we authorize the appropriate township officials to execute an agreement with the Washington County Intermediate Unit for the Services of a School Resource Officer.
Second.
Motion of second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Seven, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Contract for replacement of HVAC units, Peters Township Puni Rec Center.
So, the 2024 budget includes an appropriation of $650,000 for the replacement of the HVAC units at the rec center. On Wednesday, June 5th, we opened bids. Despite the fact that we had nine firms show up for a pre-bid bidding, only two chose to submit bids. Both of those are significantly over the amount that was budgeted. And as a result, it's going to be my recommendation that we reject the bids.
So moved.
Second.
Why did only two submit out of nine?
I think it's a couple of reasons. One, this project, we need to replace the rubber roofs that are under the units at the same time. I don't think we did a good enough job to be able to find the roofing companies to do that. That person, the roofing company would serve as a subcontractor to the HVAC contractor. That's not a common thing. So, I think one of the things we could have done a better job of is actually identifying that. The other thing is, these numbers are extremely high, and I don't know to what extent it has to do with the HVAC units themselves or the control systems that was designed around the HVAC system. So, we're going to take a serious look at this and try to get it back in line with the budget.
Okay. Thank you. So, a motion of second, all in favor of rejecting the bids.
Aye.
Opposed. Seven, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Payroll bills?
Yes, sir. I refuse to expire this evening's meeting. Find them all to be in order and that they be approved.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Seven, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Correspondence letter from Rich Kovach, Peters Creek, San Suri, Peters Township Council.
I guess the only thing I want to point out to you is that the sanitary authority does not believe they have a problem with their sanitary lines despite the fact that the fire station was flooded. Even to the extent that they believe that there was a surcharge on those two dates, they believe it was the first time there's ever been a surcharge on that line, which is difficult to believe in and of itself. But having talked to the previous owner of the property, he had numerous problems with surge backing up in that facility. And what he related to me, that he, in fact, was in contact with the sanitary authority at the time.
Did he disclose that? Did the previous owner disclose that to us when we bought the property?
No. And that was not disclosed. But the person I'm talking to is who ran that business there. I didn't talk to the person who actually owned it at the time.
George.
Yeah. So, they have turned this over to their insurance company. I got a lecture about the Mississippi Alister Claim Act for 10 minutes, which I am aware of. So, I think the bottom line is, what the sanitary authority's position is, is the township's responsibility to make sure that surge doesn't back up into their building. And we've taken steps to make sure that happens.
Even though they've obviously had issues in the past?
Yes.
And what seemed to me, as Mr. Smith will agree, and I'm sure Mr. Arcuri will agree too, negligence is an exception to authority.
But what they have said, and they tell you in their letter, is that they went and searched their files and find no evidence that this has ever occurred. You know, one of the things that I think we either, I think we have put them on notice, but I think it might be worthwhile, their meeting, their next meeting is opposite our meeting, is for someone from here to stop down to make sure, part of their minutes, somebody makes the point that, in fact, there's a surcharge problem on that line. Does there's a record of it?
Do the fire department have records if they ever went down there to the old building and pumped out like the water or something like that? I mean, I'm assuming, maybe we add records.
Well, we can search our response records. If they would have ever called the fire department for service, we would have those records, yes. Anything prior to 2011 will be in paper form. But...
I can't believe that.
It never happened before.
And the thing, like I said, that kind of throws me is, I can believe it happened once, that it never happened, this was the first time. It happened twice within 10 days, and these are the first two times it's ever happened.
Particularly, I mean, if it were a commercial building, like it had 30 tenants and you had a lot of people using the facilities or whatever, right? Maybe you make that, all right, it's far state, you've got like three people there, maybe, I mean, there's two people, right? There's no way that the number of people using it is somehow overburdening the sewer.
Yeah. I mean, I could see the other building, fire building.
Right. How much are we talking about here again, in terms of how much?
About $80,000.
I think it's in the 110, like 70, 70.
So, it's just enough money that you're aggravated to pay the bill, but it's too little to litigate over.
Right. It's actually 92.
Yep. Okay. Any other discussion on that, Larry? Next correspondence, invite 2024 Washington County Convention being held Thursday, October 10th, 2024.
And if anybody's interested in attending, let me know or register.
Any discussion on the minutes for the other boards? Anything from zoning and hearing board tonight?
Well, there's a couple appeals.
I was going to ask you.
And I don't know what we're going to do with those. I know the recommendation isn't...
Where's the two appeals? Oh, I, okay.
I was going to ask you, how many variances they handed out since the last meeting?
I don't know. What to tell you in the...
The way it feels this one, the July one.
The one into the agricultural setback.
And then this one's...
There's three potential variances coming in August.
All-dimensional variances, I presume?
Yes. Especially the last two, Ford and Andash, are both items in setbacks.
Well, that's written on, because it says they're scheduled to meet July 16th. It should be August something.
It's next Tuesday.
I swear, ah, Gary.
Are they ones that we need to take a position on, or?
You can. The one that strikes me is the one where you're going into the 40-foot setback, 19 feet, I mean.
Oh, God.
To construct what?
A roof over top of a patio.
The patio's there already.
I don't know whether it's there or not, but they're going to do, and the slab itself doesn't cause a problem. It's the roof.
It's the roof, sure. That should be an absolute no.
Why don't you make that motion, Mr. Lewis? Because I don't want to make it look like I have something, you know, like I have an axe to grind with the zoning hearing board or anything like that.
What are we, what are we going to do at this point in time? Take a stand in a position that they need to enforce the ordinance with regard to setbacks?
Right.
And the provisions of the zoning hearing board has got, what, five conditions they need to meet? Yeah, we ought to take exception to...
You need a motion for us to take a position?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we take a position to oppose the requested variance.
Is excessive and...
On test 41-2024.
Second.
Motion of second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Seven, nothing.
So, the case right before it, though, I mean, that one strikes me in that they want to encroach with their installation of a generator, so it's a noisy piece of equipment that they want to put even closer to their neighbors.
It's, what I don't know is, I don't know whether that's necessary because that's where power comes into the building, and that's what I don't know.
The property located, the two-story...
And to the neighbor's care.
If the neighbors don't care.
Is it a Harwoodian system building? Where is this? Where's 38?
Are you the neighbor?
3836.
He cares.
3836, Washington.
So, that's right by, I think that's right, right next to Med Express.
Which one are we talking about?
The first one on there.
Porcher one?
That's at the corner of Old Oak and Washington.
That's that.
Next to Med Express and...
That's the hole.
So, that's the same property where they came in that time and wanted a variance not to connect?
Yes.
Correct. But they're willing to connect now?
They're willing to show the connection.
What's that mean?
That means it may not physically connect. But that's still a discussion point. We haven't submitted, they haven't seen, we haven't seen, and they haven't submitted at any plans.
When they say 86 feet from the front lot line, right, what's the front? 19, or is it the Old Oak?
Both.
Oh, both?
Yes. So we require buildings to be set within a certain distance of the street to bring the building up towards the front of the street there.
Okay.
Any other? We can always appeal it if we don't like it.
Okay, any other zoning hearing board issues? If not, anything for next?
Well, I just, just want to remind you, next Monday, we have a meeting here with the planning commission to talk about a number of planning issues.
Again, I'm going to say, we need to do something about the kids with the motorized e-bikes on the trail. We need to look into passing some sort of ordinance that precludes them from being on the trail because it seems like every night my wife is giving me, I love my wife for saying that, but getting a 10 to 15 minute spiel about why council doesn't do something about the kids with motorized e-bikes on the trail.
We're in the process of drafting that, in fact, we have an initial draft that's being circulated to the police department and the parks department.
What about like on the road also?
Well, the, the vehicles that the kids are riding that have no pedals that look more like a dirt bike, you have to be 16 years old and licensed, the vehicle has to be licensed, you have to have insurance. So the bulk of those kids are in violation of state law, let alone any ordinance we might have. My concern is also what we're allowing to occur in our parks, including Arrowhead Trail, and we're having problems with, with damage to our facilities as the kids are riding those or running them through the grass and turf in the areas.
Yeah, those road spikes are coming really handy. The chief Frick wanted...
Was that true, I heard that they dam, a bunch of kids damaged the garbage cans on the trail?
Correct.
Is that correct? I heard that too, I didn't know what it was.
So there, how many, how many of them?
On the Arrowhead Trail, there was only one, but throughout the Moncorral Trail, on either end, I think it was about four or five, they've been replaced since.
But we have them up at the picnic pavilion, coming up to the edge of the pavilion, turning the bike away from the pavilion and then gunning it and shooting the dirt and mud up onto the, onto the serving area there.
Question about where are we with Rolling Hills Park and the development of the courts and whatnot?
We pretty much have a, the design complete. One of the things that I told you before is we, we need to go through this process of bidding out the aquatics facility first so we can find out what, how much money we have available to move forward. You know, the other thing about it is, one of the things I think we ought to be doing is the application period is going to be opening up in September for the local share account program in Washington County. We should take at least some of those facilities and make a part of an application there. We'll hear back on that in late December or January, so it won't hold it up.
Paul, if, if we get the bids back on the aquatic part and we don't like it, isn't, is it possible that we could bid Phase Two at the same time and, and would that grant money still be available for that phase?
It will not be available for anything except the aquatic center. It's, that, that money is earmarked for that, it's actually in a piece of legislation that that earmark occurs, so you can't reprogram it for that purpose. And again, you know, the thing that we've got to be cautious about, if we're ever to get money that's going to help us with the dam, it's going to come through that R cap program. And the last thing we want to do, unless it truly does not make sense, is to turn that money back because it'll make it near impossible to get another R cap grant. So we're going to go bid it and let's find out where, where it comes in and hopefully it comes in at a price we can afford.
All right.
Okay, any other items for next agenda? Hang on, motion for adjournment?
I've got to talk to you about one thing during the meeting.